I'll call the meeting to order at 7:03. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Andreessen.
Here.
Mr. Fell. Mr. Hopkins. Ms. McFarland.
Present.
Ms. Rose.
Here.
Ms. Sims. Ms. Yu.
Here.
And Mr. Allred.
Here. Okay, looks like we have a quorum. Any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, we have no minutes to approve. Any communications?
Um, there are none.
Okay, we have no continued public hearings, no old business, no new public hearings, no new business, which brings us to audience participation. Wow, we don't even have Mr. Huber here today. All right, staff report.
Uh, just briefly, um, the, uh, the committee of the whole kept the duplex, well, I guess now it's beyond duplex, but that section six, three text amendment, kept that in committee again, so we'll be returning to them here in a week and a half.
What will the date be on that? So it's not this Monday coming up?
It is the fifth, is that right?
Okay, December 5th?
Yeah, December 5th.
Okay.
And that's all.
Okay. Uh, that brings us to the study session, looking at future land use descriptions in Imagine Urbana, comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan draft.
Right, good evening. Okay. So yeah, just, um, real quick, you'll recall at our last meeting, we had a very robust discussion about incremental development, infill, a little bit about annexations, and then walkability. And then, so tonight we'll be getting to the topic that was on the agenda last time, but we, it was getting kind of late, so we pushed it to this meeting, which was nice because it gave the students who have been working on these graphics and things sometimes more time to prep some materials, so I'll be going through those tonight. And so we'll be going through the categories themselves and then, and the materials that the students have put together for that, and then also the, we've got the future land use map with some annotations on it, and then I think we've got, one, I'd say one additional map that's pretty, like, more substantive that will find its way into the plan, and then one that shows the, is the one that we talked about last time a little bit, that shows changes between the 2005 future land use and then the current draft future land use. And then we did, um, Andrea and I spent quite a bit of time reviewing and revising the, sort of, the big ideas, big moves and little moves section of the plan, so we got that out to you as well, and we can discuss that if you would like to. Okay, so to get into it, um, so the future land use map is, you know, is one of the main components of the comprehensive plan, so it, uh, sort of just lays out what kind of development we want to see and where. So I know that on the screen it's kind of small, we can look at the big map if you would like to here in a bit, but I wanted to just sort of get into the descriptions themselves and we can have a discussion, stop me whenever you want, and we can talk about it. Just for a little bit of background, so in the current comprehensive plan, this is what our future land use descriptions look like, so we're, we're producing something kind of similar in the new plan as well. The one difference, and this is by design, and we can discuss this, is that, so in this example, there's a future land use called mixed residential, and in the current plan, it's kind of split up into different development patterns, so this is mixed residential urban pattern, and it gives a description of what type of development that urban pattern is, and then on the next page, you've got the mixed residential suburban pattern, so you've got the same description for the future land use, but then it goes kind of into the form of the, you know, of, of the area that it would be in as well. For, uh, for our draft, we've, you know, we've kind of cut out that form piece, so we're just giving a description of the, the future land use, and we started with the 2005 future land uses. I'd say we pared them down a bit and kind of, um, you know, maybe made them more focused, but that's kind of how we did it, so. We, in the current draft, we have seven future land use categories compared to fifteen in the existing plan. That seven is kind of with an asterisk because there's a mixed use that we've kind of separated into more, um, more intense areas and then less intense areas, so think like downtown versus like more of a neighborhood business center, like I like to think of the area where Orazes is at, um, at Philo and Washington, that little triangle area. That's kind of what I think of when I'm thinking of the, sort of, the secondary mixed use, which I'm not tied, I don't think any of us are tied to that, that name, so if you have suggestions for making that better, we can do that. But so, uh, one thing the students have been doing is putting together these nice sort of one-page sheets that show you, show the future land use description, give some examples from Urbana with images. They also sometimes will pull images from other, uh, other cities around the country as well, if there's, if they found good examples there. So the, you know, the categories are residential, mixed residential, mixed use, and that's, again, that's core, and then secondary and commercial, institutional, green spaces and recreation, and industrial. I'm guessing there's probably not going to be a whole lot of discussion about green spaces and recreation, industrial or institutional, and maybe we'll have more discussion on the others, but, um, but yeah, we can, we can talk about whatever y'all, y'all would like to get into. Another thing that the students have done is, um, they've been, they've gotten through four of these, and these are really nice because they're kind of outlining concepts that are in the plan, and this sort of gets to the, the form that we would, you know, like to see, like, these are kind of idealized forms for these different things, so this is the, sort of, a residential layout, and it's, it's really nice. I think we, where did we steal this idea from, Dustin?
Charlotte.
Okay, Charlotte. To some extent, yeah. Yeah, we borrowed good, good parts of it and probably made it better, right?
Charlotte, North Carolina.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the students just came up.
Yeah. Yeah, so maybe they stole the idea from our 2005 plan. Yeah. That's good. So yeah, but you see, like, some of the ideas that we've been discussing from the plan, things like connectivity, traffic calming, walkability, and some other things like sort of green infrastructure is the, the term. So yeah, so that's the, the residential one, and you'll see in the legend on the right, you see there's kind of a mix of single-family, there's some duplexes, there's also townhomes in there, so that matches with the description on the previous page, which says it's, uh, you know, primarily detached housing with, with some duplexes and town, townhouses. I guess one thing that's not in there, unless I'm missing it, is any sort of, so this, this concept that we should allow for a sort of small-scale businesses throughout, I just realized that we didn't maybe add a little, you know, a little corner store or something in there. So, or it also says neighborhood-serving institutional uses, so, like a church or a mosque or something could also probably, probably fit in there as well. And then...
So I don't know how much interaction we want to do versus presenting.
Lots of interaction.
I think...
Yeah, let's, let's have interaction, yeah.
Let's have interaction.
Yeah, okay, so when you bring up the, the point that, um, this example doesn't include any businesses, it, it, it brings up two questions in my mind. We, we have this problem of talking about land uses, and in many of these, we're actually talking about development types that have multiple land uses. So if we, we may want to call them something other than land use types. We might want to call them, well, you're calling, you often are referring to them as neighborhood types that, but are development types, so that we can talk about the land uses that make up a development type. And another piece of this, because then we could, we could put, a retail node or whatever in a diagram like this.
Yeah.
But we'd be still distinguishing land uses, which might actually later indicate zoning that we're not dealing with explicitly. Second thing is, when you talk about small businesses and neighborhoods, there's an ambiguity of what that term means, because your descriptions include home businesses. So home businesses would not appear in this diagram because they wouldn't look any different from any other house, or they couldn't qualify as a home business.
Yeah.
So if businesses in a residential neighborhood as opposed to a mixed-use neighborhood actually means home-based businesses, then we have to be explicit about that. If it means a small retail node or whatever, we need to be...
Professional office that receives customers.
Well, you can do that as a home business with, in the current zoning ordinance, there are certain limits, but the home office doesn't look here any different, whereas a small retail store does, it has to meet different conditions. So, yeah, I think that's...
You can put a shingle out, but to have...
Yeah, currently...
As long as it's no bigger than three square feet.
Right, exactly, I mean, so, and, and a reason these details matter, though they, you know, we don't want to jump all the way to the zoning ordinance and what size the sign is, it's because the plan in the end is going to be the backing for any modifications to that zoning ordinance.
Right.
And if what we mean is we want to encourage home businesses, we need to say that. And if what we mean is we want more spatially distributed retail businesses or, um, other kinds of commercial, we need to, you know, that's a different land use.
Yeah. Yeah, and the intent is not just for it to be home, home-based businesses. Although it might be kind of interesting to, you know, all these houses look the same, but if you, you know, did have, like, a call-out that said, hey, and these houses have, have businesses, but they just look the same.
What's not a home-based business that would be there?
Yeah, I mean, like, a little corner store or like a coffee shop or something without a drive-through. You know, like, like a...
In residential?
Neighborhood-serving business.
Not even in mixed residential?
Yeah, I, I think that's the, the intent, because if we're talking about having more complete neighborhoods, I think we...
Okay, so, so again, it gets back to, we have to decide whether we're talking about
Yeah.
development patterns of a neighborhood of a given scope or land uses.
Yeah, I mean, and it would be like really low-intensity stuff. Right, but how do you, yeah, how do you tease that out?
Well, I think what Lou is saying is we could, we can, there's more than one way to create complete neighborhoods, right, so it could be a finer-grain distribution of different land uses, different zoning categories.
Yeah.
As well as allowing certain things within certain land uses or certain zoning categories. So, yeah, we should just figure out which, which approach and to what extent, you know, we're allowing different things in residential uses as opposed to distributing commercial corridors of different intensities throughout the city so that we have complete neighborhoods, you know, in one way or another. Back to the original question of what to call this, so the Charlotte plan calls these place types, which is another, I think, development types, place types, just other ideas to throw out.
I kind of like place better. I feel like development has a bad name.
It means several things, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Lou, you had another term too, besides, uh, development types.
I don't remember, but I think, um, I mean, place types is fine. I may have said neighborhood types, but, but that's a prob, that has its other, has another problem. I, I think place types is probably more neutral with respect to other, but the key point is we have to have some distinction between levels of aggregation of what we're talking about. So, a, a land use type eventually is going to be at least implicitly linked to notions of land use categories specified in a land, in a zoning ordinance. And I don't think we want to let that confusion carry because we're trying to, we're trying to create the notion, as Dustin just said, that land use types may be distributed at various grains. And when we get to zoning, there are two ways to do that. What set of types do you allow within one zoning district? And what sizes chunks of land, where do you give, assign that district to? And we're going to eventually do both. And the more of that we get reasonably clear in the plan, the easier it's going to be when we get to the zoning ordinance.
Right.
So I interrupted you, and you were...
No, no, that's, I mean, I'm just, I'm just going to be going through, going through the...
We're back to wherever you were, I think.
But I think that's good feedback.
Unless somebody else says something.
It's good feedback to help us then, you know, differentiate and, and make it more clear.
I'll just add too, that there's supposed to be more to this graphic. So the other main thing that this is meant to show is change over time, and I don't know, I didn't check what files were uploaded, but the idea is to have kind of a before-and-after panel, so the before panel would be the two sides of existing development with vacant land in the middle, but showing where the stubbed streets are, so that it suggests, you know, if someone is going to develop this vacant land, that they need to think about how they make the connections between the existing development on either side of it, and so then that's what the second panel is. So we're trying to accomplish multiple things with these graphics, showing change over time and the, the need to think about connectivity, but also patterns of development and development types.
Okay, and then sort of stepping up in intensity, and I like to think of these as sort of just a continuum of, you know, of sort of lower intensity up to higher intensity, and then you've got sort of your specialty things, like green, green spaces are, there's a few that are sort of like separate categories that don't quite fit into that. So mixed residential neighborhoods, so on this graphic, you'll note, you'll notice that a couple of those, uh, the two on the right side are from the mixed, well, actually, I don't know if 611 West Almond is in the mixed office residential district, but 405 West Green Street is, and I think that the, um, that MOR, the mixed office residential district, does a pretty good job of, of being sort of a, a lower-intensity, um, mixed, mixed type of neighborhood with, with not just housing and, you know, not just businesses, so there's a few businesses along there. But yeah, so this, in the description, you see it steps up intensity just with the housing types, so duplexes, townhomes and apartments, so we're adding apartments in there, still including the neighborhood-serving businesses and institutional uses.
So thinking about what I think we're trying to accomplish, and so, so partly thinking about the MOR as, as the sort of best example, closest example we've got at the moment, I think we should not talk about neighborhood-serving businesses, because as, as Bill pointed out, in this kind of neighborhood, offices, and not just home offices, but an office building the size of one of these apartment buildings, in my view, could be in the same neighborhood. Now, whether we still call that mixed residential or that's mixed use, we need to clarify, but
Yeah.
neighborhood-serving businesses, I don't think is the right label, because that's actually probably not what they're going to be.
Yeah, it's too, too narrow, yeah.
Right, and, and in many cases, that's probably, if it's a neighborhood-serving business that's going to stay in business, it's much more likely to be in a node intentionally identified spatially as a place for it to be. That is, it's going to be at the residential collector intersection with a minor arterial, or it's going to be at the intersection of two residential collectors, it's not going to be on access streets. So we're, we're going to either define by rules like I just stated or by district spatial patterns, where those go. So again, I'm not sure what the better term is, but neighborhood-serving business, I think, is the wrong... It's almost not what we want. Now, the, the home insurance office isn't a neighborhood-serving business.
Right.
You know, a home insurance office may be, uh, online, serving statewide.
Yeah, and there's like law offices in the, in that district, and I doubt, I doubt the neighborhood needs that many law services, I don't know.
The, the law service couldn't survive if its market were the neighborhood, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, and that's, yeah.
The kinds of things we want are not, so we need a different label there.
Kevin, could you go back to the previous?
I can, yeah.
What, what strikes me here, I'm, I'm picturing someone trying to use this to imagine the neighborhood, to perhaps imagine development in the neighborhood, and what we, what we photograph and what we sketch shows two very different things. This shows up here particularly, a little bit in others, but here it's strongest, that you have a streetscape on the one and, and images of buildings in another, and if we're, if, if, if we're trying to, to, to draw a picture of what a neighborhood is, then, uh, it, it, it's hard to put the streetscape and the, the solitary objects as they appear here, as, it, it, it's sort of like, what we have doesn't make a streetscape and we want a streetscape, dag on, you know, something like that. That's, that's the story that this set of images tells me, and I'm, I'm wondering, I'd like to bring them together, I'd like to see what's aspirational in a drawing be within reach of what we show existing.
The action's specifically that. These sketches don't match
No.
what we're talking about.
Okay. Yeah.
It has to do with where they came from and who chose them. But the second thing is, the students also have done ability connections, whatever, that includes street cross-sections or street type. I think, I don't think we have access to them.
We don't yet, yeah.
So I think that will get at what you're concerned with.
Yeah, yeah.
Some of them are really good. Off the, right-of-way, the relationship buildings on both sides, and none of it, curve-to-curve, street profiles there.
Right, yeah.
Equivalent of these, but they're...
Right, yeah.
And maybe we need to think about how to locate somehow with these.
Yeah, yeah. In sketches that we saw previously, they, they seemed non-Urbana, and I was, and I, I don't want to add burden to those responsible for drawing these beautiful sketches, but somehow I prefer a link with, between actual photographs, a stronger link between the actual photographs and the sketches that we intend to use.
So I...
I don't think the, the students actually drew these, these are just found images, but I think they, yeah, there's, there's a couple, but I think they included them more for this, for discussion purposes, so. But to me, the, the other piece of this is that the, the images of the buildings are more what I think of as development types, and I think what you're asking about are place types.
Yeah.
So, and I think part of that is why this was done, so the following page is getting at more of the place type, but
Yeah.
you want to see what it looks like walking down the street in part of this place type, is what I'm hearing, something like that.
Putting a burden on somebody that would be too great for me to take, but could we have these images, uh, work in a way that someone could say, I get it, here's what we have, but here's where we're going? That couldn't pay me to do that job, but, uh, but boy, it would be really nice if...
And you, you bring up a, a really good perspective, because I don't think when we were doing these photos that we were really thinking aspirational, it was just examples of this type of use, and so maybe that is something we should do, have aspirational, but those photos weren't intended to be that. They were intended to just be additional examples.
But the, linking the image to what we're trying to achieve is
Yeah, absolutely.
is important, and it comes up in the next slide that you're going to show, and that is, this appears as infill, full infill, uh, in, in the, the next image.
Yeah.
And I, I've been imagining what, of a, uh, of a, a large parcel, and I, I was wondering how an image like this would, might be possible, it might not, for incremental infill, as we were discussing previously. I, I don't know how you could instruct that the way we can provide good instruction with this, but... the way we can provide good instruction with this, but. Well, I mean, I, I pictured this beginning, this non, not existing and, and existing to the left and right. And we, and this entire thing is filled in. And I'm wondering if the same, i- if someone who imagines smaller incremental infill in, in an existing, one parcel, other parcels.
You're talking about like filling in two buildings?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, redevelopment at a smaller scale. If, if we can, if, if we're promoting that and we're promoting this, I'd kind of like to see both portrayed.
Yeah, I, I really like that idea because, yeah, these illustrations that we're showing are, you know, it's, it's almost like the, the current mode of development where you just have a giant site and everything gets built all at once, right? But if we had one of these where it's like you had, say, you know, a bunch of existing buildings that were all sort of in gray, but you had some vacant sites or something. And then you could show sort of a, a change of like those, those sites getting filled in over time.
Go back to that previous.
Some buildings changing. This one or that one before?
So, I mean, 405 West Green is an example of that, right? So 405 West Green is an infill project. That if you expand out the view of that, you would see an old, you know, house on one side and an old house on the other side. So.
Could do the same way we did this. Get a picture of before.
Yeah.
And, and.
Yeah, it was a pretty, I'd say, not cared-after house. I think it was just a single-story, I guess. It was, yeah.
Yeah.
The, the three houses would be there.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Dustin, you bring up.
In plan view or in?
You're thinking of photo.
Oh, well, no, I mean. Yes, I was thinking plan view, plan view as well.
Yeah, I really.
And what you described of having sort of a gray area with, with splotches of, that show. Yeah.
Dustin, you bring up a good point about the one photo. You know what it is. You know it's infill, but the picture really doesn't say that. Because if you don't have that institutional knowledge, you don't know that, oh yeah, that replaced, like Glue said.
Of doing what we just described, I think you hit it. 405 West Green. Other is the one we were just.
Right. Staggered changes, you mean? Maybe it wouldn't all be done bell swoop?
When, when we did this.
Oh, sorry.
That's the voice of God.
I'm sorry. We might do it with three or four pages where it would not all happen at once, but it would show. And the other thing that this gets back to in my mind is we need to be much more careful about our uses of the word incremental, infill, and redevelopment. Because they're three different things. And this discussion is getting at the way people think about those things. Because even the big one we're talking about now is an important piece of incremental. Because what it's doing is saying that two subdivisions were built with stub streets, an increment and a leapfrog, and then something else came later, you know? Three-step process. So that's incremental. But it's big increments or bigger increments. But there's still a problem of connecting them because you've got to connect the streets. They've got to have connectivity. They've got to relate to each other. So having all three types explicit so people other than us understand what we're talking about.
And we neglected to attach the definition page with what you have. So that's another piece that we need to provide to you to get that kind of feedback.
Right, well.
What that differentiation is.
Yeah, when we get, if we get to the revised stuff here.
Right.
It's, it's, it's issuing this.
And we, we do have those definitions, the hover definitions.
No, no, but, but what I'm talking about now is not the definitions, but the use of the terms sort of indiscrimin-, ambiguously. Ambiguously, so that we miss what we're actually talking about. We need to be, anyway, we can get back to that if we get through the language.
You raise a great point.
Okay.
Somebody's taking notes so we know what.
Okay, so moving along in intensity. So then we get into the mixed use, which again, we're talking sort of the, the core. So like the downtown-type areas, places like Gregory Place by the university, I think would be, you know, that's more of a core type of a, a mixed use area. And then we describe sort of the lesser intense ones as secondary. Again, totally not married to these terms. But, so we described them as medium to high density with a mix of business, office, multi-story, mixed residential and institutional uses.
Could I ask, could I ask a question? It seems like the, we'll call them drawings, the ones that aren't the actual photos, seem to be causing some confusion about what they're, what they represent. Like, are they supposed to be aspirational or examples? Are we better not using that type and just stick with the actual photographs? Just like to have some feedback on that.
I think that's, given, given our resources to get them drawn exactly what we want, I think at the moment, that's the best solution.
Is to just go with the photos?
Well. To say that the ones we have are not working, let's put it that way. And that unless we come out with a way to get something more useful to communicate, that we're better off without them.
Yeah, or using found, just images of existing development that is similar to what we're imagining. I mean, honestly, the students shifted away from that to making these things.
Yeah, which are very useful, so, yeah.
Right, they're not so exact, yeah. Yeah, I think we're, it just seems like they're causing confusion. And I think if we could just remove those and.
I don't, I don't know that this one about the secondary core is that bad.
A one about the secondary.
I mean, you got a little business in the middle, the, the sketch.
You're talking about the lower left of the upper four?
The, yeah.
Second, second row?
Yep. Yeah, this one.
But I, I still think it's problematic. Because if, if, if that's a node like Washington and Phila, it, it's not at all clear what's going on. Partly because the sketch has some scale problems and so on. I think it.
I think it would be better to just find images of existing places that are similar to.
Yeah, and they, they don't have to be, I don't think they have to be Urbana actual photos, but just some good.
But I would avoid picturing Burlington, Vermont. It's not like we want to be Burlington, Vermont. And I think some users of this document could interpret that, that, are we headed in that direction?
Well, it would be, it, it is likely that if we can find images from champagne Urbana.
Would be preferred, yeah.
That they will communicate more effectively. Because people will understand them better.
How about if the images were, I mean, it's, it, it's tough to use a street image in a way. Suppose you used a somewhat aerial drone that captured a half dozen adjacent buildings where you were able to point things, something that, we're limited if we're doing What we show for downtown Urbana in this sort of, is at the upper limit of what we're able to achieve, I think, given, given the, the spacing of the buildings. Somehow we could have an Urbana image that was able to convey more information and teach better. It might help.
Talking about a low-angle area?
Yeah, a low-angle aerial.
And we have historical ones, right?
Of like oblique aerials. We, we do have some from a really long time ago. We've, I'd have to look into it. We've got access to software, actually, that's, that could give that to us. But I have to see what sort of the licensing would be. But, yeah, I could pull, I could pull some of that, some examples and toss them in here. I didn't, I had not thought of that, so, so a really good suggestion.
That's the, the Charlotte plan that we've been looking at. That's the kind of images that they use. This kind of not bird's eye, but you know, something elevated off the ground.
Yeah, and if for whatever.
Drone hobbyist in the city that can.
Pardon?
There's no drone hobbyist in the city that wants to.
We know some drone people. Also, the Park District has at least one person on staff that has the licensing to operate, the license to drone, so.
Doing, I mean, seeing the, the Charlotte example, but also as a way to do street views is, could be particularly useful. And, and probably much more useful than the sketches, even if the.
And if what we do in the plan is for, for infill, for example, where if we have a lot of gray, but we have highlights, each of which illustrate possibilities, then somehow that, if, if instead of drones, we use software that somehow captured the actual image, if we could do the same kind of highlighting of a, of a shot.
Yeah.
No, you could do that in sketch, you, not me, could do that in SketchUp. You as somebody.
One could do that.
Familiar with SketchUp. Anyway, some of these things are aspirational in both senses.
I know.
But aspirations are good.
Okay, so, yeah, so then we've got this diagram that looks suspiciously like the pines.
Funny thing about that.
I mean, it does, but, yeah.
So again, a sort of question of how much nitty-gritty we want to get into, but in, in reading through the comments on these that, that are in the text, there's, there's some cleanup that needs to be done.
Yeah, I agree.
But, you know, I'm not putting that on you or whatever. I'm just saying, these are drafts.
Yeah.
How much of a problem, or do you think it is a problem, that many in Urbana will recognize this as close to the pines?
I don't think it's a problem at all because you've got, the southern half of the pines is undeveloped. Actually, more than the southern half.
Right.
So.
Yeah, so.
And I think it's a good example of infill. I mean, that's what they've done. They've added, you know, each little section.
And, and that's sort of the intent. So if it's not that big a problem, then I think we can maybe make even sharper some of the word descriptions of what this is about. Because that's part of the idea of doing this was, it's actually was, I think it came from one of the responses online to something earlier. A respondent suggested, why can't the pines be filled in with residential? And so we thought, oh, you know, that's a reasonable, interesting idea. What happens? And it, it becomes consistent with a whole lot of things we're trying to talk about, which this then becomes a node, which it is sort of, I mean, we need to, again, articulate it even more strongly, I think, in the other parts of the document. But just, I wanted to see what reaction it was, because.
I have a technical question. We show ponds of different sizes. And I recall the discussion we had about the detention or retention pond at Hope. Are, are these graphic devices? Are, can these really go where we're showing them?
Well, this one's there.
This one's there.
Yeah.
And I'm pretty sure the ones in the other examples are at least there because we think the detention or, the stormwater ordinance would require on sites of vast scale of new development, meaning the DART site or the infill up north, that detention would be required in order to meet the requirements. So we haven't done the engineering design to say, how big does this have to be? And that kind of thing, but there are detention ponds there because.
Yeah, it would.
Maybe we need a disclaimer.
I haven't seen any small ones. I'm familiar with larger ones everywhere in town.
There's some small ones in subdivisions, yeah.
Anyway, okay.
Yeah, okay. So, and then, then we get into commercial, which is, you know, much, much more intense, much more focused on just, you know, business, business uses. We did add the, that last statement that higher-density residential uses may be appropriate there. Because they may be. And just along the, the lines of talking about sort of a continuum, we feel like that makes sense.
So again, I think we've got to come up with another label. Not only this is not a future land use description, but it's not commercial.
Yeah, what, I don't, I don't really like the term "commercial" all that much.
But I haven't come up, I mean, we've already talked about this. I haven't come up with a better one yet. And one solution that I've found when I can't come up with a better term is to use more than one term. So it might be commercial and something, or I, I don't know. But I think we also want to make clear here that in one sense, this is about higher-intensity development. And the use actually doesn't matter. In other words, this could be office buildings. This could be labs. It could be residential. It could be retail. It could be multiuses in the same building.
That's exactly what.
I'm comfortable with the use of the term "commercial" just because it fits with architecture and construction to distinguish commercial from residential.
You know, I can see how that connotation works. But if we're going to do that, then we have to be much more explicit and include, you know, not, not just talk about business, retail, restaurants. We need to talk about a whole bunch of other things.
Going back to the point that was raised earlier, and I know Kevin mentioned it too. When we were first looking at these different types, whatever, you know, we're calling them, we really did talk about a continuum of intensity. And I think that's what you're hitting on as well. You know, is that a better way to look at it?
Well, the, there's also a subtly, subtlety about continuum. Because I do think we want breaks.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because I think we want discreet breaks. But is it a succession of.
Right.
Of increasing intensity.
Exactly.
Okay, but we want breaks. And in some cases, for different uses, the use actually matters, not just the intensity. And this gets, when we get to the next category of industrial, there's an issue that is related to this.
Well, let's get to it.
Well, I.
Oh, wait, we gotta go through this first.
We were talking about was that you would have, um, I mean, it would kind of, what we would have in the past called light, light industrial would have made, would make sense in commercial. So like biotech, you know, companies or something like that would make sense in a commercial place type.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you, and that was one reason, um, I think the, is the existing, let's see.
We had, I think in the other plan, it was, um, light industrial was in with office, and that didn't seem quite right either.
Well, but it's partly because light industrial, so, so again, we've got, we've got uses, we've got development types, sometimes it matters, sometimes it don't. We, we've learned that we don't want self-storage in commercial areas unless it's interior and designed for an urban context. We don't want warehouses because of truck traffic and nighttime activity. Warehouses might have been considered light industrial 20 years ago when 2005 was put together. So, um, oh, I, commercial may be a word we can use for a category, but I think we have to. Maybe, I'm trying to think of those, almost, at least in our heads, simulate the translation to a zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
And think about when we establish a category, so my five attributes that apply to this as well as a zoning ordinance. There's use, the activity that occurs there, there's the physical form, there's the interaction and effects, the externalities on other places. There's ownership, like in institutional, and there's change. That is, by defining the attributes, how do we allow it to change over time? And we need to, when we're, if we're going to talk about aggregates of use types or aggregates of any of these things, we've got to. Acknowledge all of that at both levels. And we're sort of doing it, it's not that we're not doing it at all, it's that there's some refinement we need to do.
What if we called it like a activity center or something like that? I mean, it could also be varied, like the Charlotte plan, for example, uses community activity center, which would be something that would be more neighborhood focused, right? So hypothetical redevelopment of the DART site, right? It's mostly residential, but maybe it has this node of, of retail and cafes or whatever. So would that be something better described as a community activity center? Whereas what we now call commercial out on North Cunningham would be more of a regional, regional activity center.
So this gets to place types.
Right.
Which is what you're now describing as opposed to uses.
Right.
And much of what these site diagrams that the students have done are about place types. Less than they're about uses. But the activity centers, because, because when we get to the larger perspective maps, we're going to have to talk about places in that way. The nodes, the, and corridors and places.
Um, I, I will point out that when we get to the map showing changes between the existing future land use and then this draft form. A fair amount of areas in that, that show up as change were because I changed it from light industrial office just over to this commercial. Because I thought it should just be this more, more inclusive thing to pull in that, that stuff. So I'll, I'll point out some, some examples of that.
Something like activity center, could it be even more inclusive?
Yeah.
And some more terms like that for other, other areas.
Was in front of me, but there's, I'm sure there's other.
Yeah.
Other things we could come up with.
All right, and then we've got sort of what I'm describing, well, did we get to industrial? No, not yet, but, um, so institutional is sort of something I just consider sort of a special, a special circumstance. So it's just big, sort of big campus type things. So your hospitals and your universities and larger, or like government, government spaces and such.
So, um, as you've heard too many times, I have a problem with institutional as a category. But let's think about it in the context of a plan as opposed to a zoning or regulatory context. Are we planning for institutional spatial patterns?
Like in this plan, or are we just?
Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is, in the context that we're talking about now. How are we going to use the notion of institutional in the plan? We, we're labeling existing institutional to keep track of where we are.
Yeah.
And if that's what we're doing, then it sort of doesn't, it doesn't matter too much.
Yeah.
If we're trying to think about institutional as something we're planning for the future. Then I think we have to be pretty specific about what we're up to.
Yeah, okay, so now that I understand your question, no, we are not planning for institutional. This is just basically showing the extent of the institutional land holdings today.
We may go a step further and even say we would probably discourage more institutional. Because it means it's tax, you know, it doesn't pay property taxes, you know?
Right, which could be a reason to actually highlight this from, I mean, I, your point is part of what I was trying to get at.
Yeah.
The, the, the last thing we want is more of this. Um, and, um.
But it includes religious uses, which could occur in any district or any.
Right, and we didn't, yeah, and we didn't map, um, like all the small churches and things around town. Cause that can occur in just residential areas too. This is, this is mostly just mapping big campus-y type stuff.
So one of my reactions is, we might, if we think of these descriptions we're working on as place types. For the moment, using that terms, which incorporate descriptions of development types, whatever you want to call them. More than just use, but use physical form, et cetera, et cetera. Then we might just eliminate the institutional category. Because the only thing that distinguishes the institutional category from any of the other things we're talking about. Is the regulatory conditions and the property tax conditions of institutional uses. And if we want to imply. You know, like your description of mixed use or residential, which allows institutional uses such as schools or churches.
Yeah.
That's, you know, that's a line we in some sense both want, and even if we didn't, we couldn't do anything about it. Whereas this kind of stuff, please no. Please know that we want no. And I don't think we need it as a category.
Yeah, I mean.
Just had it as a, like a non-category color, like, you know, gray on the map and label them what they are, but not call it out as a future land use or?
Well, so I guess what I'm saying is.
Well, the university in particular, there's a big chunk of land.
So, so let's think about this two different ways. The, a future land use map includes a lot of existing stuff. Most of a future land use map is actually not about the future at all. So we can identify on the future land use map institutional uses, but we don't have a land use description of institutional use. Does, to me, the land use description we're giving here makes no sense.
Yeah, better to describe it in the other place types where it would be appropriate to have those things, right?
Well, for uses that would be appropriate, churches, schools, et cetera.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But not list, colleges, county courthouses, federal courthouses, nonprofit hospitals. You know, I may be missing something here, county offices.
Schools is another one.
Yeah, but, but I mean, we're, we're going to have schools.
Yeah.
But we don't need any more of these other things, which is what most of the examples here are. Well, once a firehouse, we're going to have firehouses, but that's the.
But then you look at the example where we have, um, you know, the county plaza is now going to become a government building. So that, that went from a private sector use to a, to an institutional use.
We lost the tax base.
I'm sorry?
Did we lose the tax base?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
But it's still, yeah, I mean, the use is, it's an office building, and it's going to remain.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
That for all of our other purposes, in terms of physical form, activity center, whatever, it's an office building.
Yep.
And if you go to the five attributes, it happens to be owned by a public entity that doesn't pay property taxes. That's an attribute of that place that gives us pain.
Sort of like parks.
Right.
They don't pay taxes and they're there, you know?
Right, but, but there's another reason to not put them in a category of institutional, which some people do because of the ownership issue. But they shouldn't be.
I agree with that, 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 I mean, that it's there, so it belongs on the map. But we're talking about manipulating built fabric, and this isn't part of what we, what we have our hands on, really.
I'm trying to think through an example, so like Brookins is shown in blue on this, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's say Brookins is vacated and there's a potential for it to be redeveloped, and someone comes in with a proposal and wants to rezone it, right?
Right.
We would look at, we would want to have guidance to say, oh, that's a, a community activity center, and that allows these kinds of things.
Right.
That makes sense with the proposed rezoning, right?
And we want.
Yeah, we don't.
Something like mixed use or commercial, it's an activity center, and an activity center has this sort of.
Yeah, because one thing we don't want is for it to say institutional, yeah.
We wouldn't get to that, we wouldn't have that.
And another example would have been the county nursing home, how that then got sold and it became private sector.
And how was that?
I think that's all the blue blob right now.
It is, yeah, yeah, it is.
So, so this is crucial, that when I said, you know, it reports what is. We, we, we need to not just leave it as institutional if that's what we don't want it to be. Which is another reason to not use the category. So maybe your previous suggestion of not even, not using a common color for the university, the courthouses, the whatever, but.
Just label it.
Yeah.
Label them, because most of them, we could do that.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. And the, um, the ones that really, so I thought about a similar thing a few months ago is these, uh, these university properties that are up in the, uh, to the northeast of town. They have some forests out there, and they're in big blue blobs on our current future land use map. And I carried that over to these, and I was thinking, why are these blue? These should be probably green space, yeah, probably just green, so.
But maybe labeled on the annotated detailed version so we know what they are.
Yeah. All right, get rid of that. Okay, on to industrial. So this is, you know, the, the current plan says heavy industrial, and then it says light industrial slash office. We just went with straight like industrial, because that's sort of what people think of as heavier industrial uses. So that includes sort of big, big manufacturing and processing. It does say research and development, which it could fit in there, but it shouldn't be the only place where that is, because that's not really a, a noxious use or anything. And warehousing and distribution, so kind of just high-traffic stuff or sort of like, you know, nastier stuff that you don't want where you live. And so really the only, actually, yeah, the only area that is now painted industrial is sort of this area north of, um, you know, like Link, on Lincoln Avenue, north of 74. And then sort of up, uh, west of Cunningham, once you get north of Farm and Fleet.
So, um, I, I, I think maybe this is what you're saying. If industrial is going to be only heavy industrial. Which I think it should be, I mean, we've got to have that category distinct from other things.
Yeah.
So if that's what it's going to mean. But I think, um, we should explicitly identify some of the stuff you just said, noxious.
Yeah.
It's the externalities that are, that's the issue in the industrial. But the other in our case is rail access.
Yeah.
So I would argue that we don't want offices on North Lincoln because we're giving up parcels.
Yeah.
That have access. And we've been working pretty hard to keep the stuff up there, either rail needed or rail associated, like the concrete plant that.
Yeah.
We did a couple of years ago. So, so I, there is a way to treat heavy industrial as a positive opportunity, rather than thinking of it as, oh, we're just going to keep that up there in that corner where nobody cares about it. That's Urbana's opportunity to have heavy industry.
Yeah, I mean, it's got great access to highway and, highway and rail right there, so yeah.
Yeah, so that's where, so warehouses, the, the noxious effects, as, as I think you just said, are pretty specific. They're traffic-related, freight traffic in particular, related, and noxious effects, external effects.
Yeah.
Noise, dust, lights, whatever. And then we have to be, you know, the flip side is we have to be really clear. Say, north of Farm and Fleet, is that also heavy industry? Or is that something else? Is that commercial in our new definition of commercial or whatever? And I don't know the answer to that immediately, but I think it's different.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like the airport is, like, that's not a, an noxious type thing, right?
Well, it has its own set of.
Yeah, it's kind of.
There, there's so many rules specific to an airport.
Yeah.
But Frasca Aviation's office and manufacturing facility are not noxious as far as I know. And therefore I think of it as a different kind of area. Plus, it's not clear that we want heavy industry along North 45.
Yeah.
As we might want other stuff up there.
Yeah, okay. Okay, onward, um, green spaces and recreation, uh, this is essentially the, is it the same? I think it's pretty close to what we have existing. I threw in cemeteries here because they used to be an institutional, and that made no sense to me. Cause they're, they're green spaces.
So again, what are we actually classifying here? And I think we're moving toward classifying not so much by ownership or institutional. So if we're going to have the. So, if we're gonna have the, the university forests be described as green space, then cemeteries can be described as green space. And then it means we have to explain what is in our green space and recreation category and why it's there. So, there's probably a sentence or two to add about why certain things are there that-
Okay.
-might not otherwise be there.
Sorry, I mean, we don't say why, so, yeah.
Where are we saying to get rid of the, this as a category too, then, or?
What?
Green space? No?
No, well-
But we're not planning, the same sort of logic, we're not planning for future green space.
Uh, I disagree.
Well, I threw some green spaces up along the saline branch.
No, I didn't ask you, that was a question.
Yeah, yeah, um.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Still common property.
Yeah, yeah, that one's on there.
The boneyard, the, I, I haven't given up on a couple other things, like rural residential in the northeast, which is also a green space-related thing.
Mm-hmm.
And there's some in, in the industrial zone, there's a buffer implied in there along the upper saline.
And is this consistent-
We very much are planning for it.
Is it consistent with park district plans and forest, forest district?
I, I will, I'm, I'm pretty sure, but, um, I'll, I'll check and, and make, make sure.
Okay.
Um, we did, we had a, a really good meeting with the park district a little while back, um, and, um, yeah, I think we're, we're all kind of on the same page with things. They're, you know, focusing more, like, not on expanding outside of the, you know, city boundaries and things, and looking more at, uh, park infill, I guess you would call it, you know, so it's good.
But, but some of the buffers and so on aren't necessarily park district property, but they're still of interest to the city in terms of floodway and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Even if they're in the ETJ.
Yeah, and we might wanna discuss the one that's sort of up along Lincoln Avenue. I just kind of painted it, uh, pretty sort of green to the east side of Lincoln Avenue.
Yeah, well, this gets back to the heavy industry and how far over it comes, and you've at the moment, I think, got a just left of Lincoln Avenue.
Yeah.
But we've already got the cement plant on the right side of Lincoln Avenue, and I think we wanna include that as that.
It, it is. So, the only, basically, the only place that I put, and I can, I'm gonna-
Oh, I see, I, I missed read where I was on the map.
Yeah, I'm just gonna pull up, oh, I had a link to it, but I think when you-
Yeah.
-move it over, it, right, it doesn't have smart links.
Oh, I was-
Does that shape the floodplain, or what is that?
Uh, now, I mean, sort of, I just did a buffer, I think, of a couple hundred feet.
Okay. On the floodplain or on the?
On the, just the center line of the saline branch.
To the east, but you've, you've, everything east of Lincoln-
Yeah, right, yeah, so this over here is 200 feet, I think, and then, yeah.
I agree, we, we need to, we need to work on that, details of that, because as protection of the saline, we wanna, we want it there.
Right.
But I think on the left, we need to think about future land use there, because that's well within the ETJ.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And that's also where the Olympic Drive dead end is.
Yeah.
So, we have to protect that right of way.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I'd be, I wouldn't be opposed to just doing a couple hundred-foot buffer and then, you know, making the rest of it something else. I mean, they do have, yeah, I mean, there's some houses up there, there's Prairie Fruits Farm.
Food farms is up there. Yeah.
I'm sure that's not going anywhere anytime soon, so.
Yeah, well, it did get sold, remember?
Yeah.
The, one of the things, and this may be a prompt to bring it up, I think we still need a rural residential place type. And this would be another example of where it belongs.
Mm-hmm.
But also in northeast Urbana, on the east side of the, uh, saline, we need, we need a distinction of development or place type there, because it should not be sewed. And if it should not be sewed, it implies a different development type.
Yeah.
Lou, what, how do you define rural? I mean, is that in the ETJ, or what, how do you classify?
So, it's defined in the 2005 plan, and it, it was defined for specific purposes. One was because of sewerage, and the other was because of road network type. We basically argued that we did not want any bridges across the saline between, what, Brown, um, Perkins Road and, uh, Olympian Drive, I think.
So, they're still in the city limits?
No, most of this is in the ETJ.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought you were saying.
Yeah, yeah.
But we still, we have to deal with the ETJ.
I'm sure.
It comes to us, and these are the issues that matter when it comes to us. So, if we don't have that specific backing, we don't remember what to do. And we may not have the backing to do it if we want to. So, I, I think we, the rural residential place type could be added to our place types.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we now have two places to apply it.
Yeah.
And, uh, the, the ETJ extends past Fort Harris Road.
Yeah.
So, um, I don't know what, we're not defining, for the most part, at the moment, uh, place types for the ETJ.
Mm-hmm.
But to a certain extent, we should. And I don't think we have to be exhaustive, but as I explained, there, there's a reason to me to define those two. To the east and south, I think we can use the sewer problem expansion as the definition.
Mm-hmm.
Basically, that limits it on the east and the south, and anything beyond that can be treated as agricultural for our purposes at the moment.
All right, and I can get back to this. Okay, then I also included, uh, in here, and you all got this as well, is the, that map of, of changes, which, like, based on what we were just talking about, a lot of the purple area on the northeast is gonna revert back to, to rural residential, so it wouldn't actually be shifting. And then, I mean, I can just kind of sort of describe some of these bits. Yeah, a lot of this was, um, so, you know what? I should just pull up the actual map, so we can zoom in on it. Nope, that's not it. Okay, so, yeah, this whole area up in the northeast, we can change back to rural residential.
It, it might not be the whole area-
Right.
-based on sewer. I think it is, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
Um, because sewer expansion to the north by gravity for part of that is possible, and we want to encourage that, because it's the cheapest expansion.
Oh, like up here, yeah.
Well-
Right.
I think it includes, well, we're, I think it's this area, but it should be on one of our maps, but it's hard to read, because that map, it's, it's there, but it's almost unreadable.
Oh, yeah, well, I can pull that up if we wanna talk about that, too.
Can you read it on the computer any better than you can on the paper?
Yeah. Urban Opportunity Map, yeah, whoops. Yeah, I really like this map, it's, it's got some good, good things happening, so.
So, the dotted area here-
Yeah.
Is the area serviceable by sewers, by gravity, unserviced but serviceable by gravity.
Yeah.
And the area to the right that is not serviced-
Yeah.
And the serviced line is the red dotted dash line. It's already serviced.
Mm-hmm, yeah, this-
It's the area over here.
Yep.
That's what we would call rural residential, then?
Yeah, now, that, the serviced line being east of the saline makes no sense to me. I think that's the serviced area line, not the serviced line.
Yeah.
But I, I gotta check that. Oh, no, that's the-
That's not the-
That's the N X A, that's the, what is that?
Cunningham.
Pardon?
That's Cunningham.
No, no, this, this area here.
I'm talking about this right here. If the red line is the UCSD serviced area, which I think it is, then I, I don't understand-
Yeah.
...how it goes. Something's wrong with that line.
Yeah, yeah, it shouldn't have-
This line from here to here shouldn't be there, I think.
You're talking about all this area in here by the-
Yeah.
Like, that should, yeah.
That's not serviced to sewers, I'm almost certain.
Yeah, that's, that's strange, because-
Okay, anyway-
Okay, yeah, we'll figure it out.
I think that's wrong, and the, boy, these are the kinds of things we gotta keep our-
Yeah.
So, just, just to the left of this line here, you're talking about?
Yeah, so-
This, this area right here?
Is not serviced. That's the serviced boundary, actually, it's this line that's, I think, wrong. So, all of the area is unserviced, but I'll have to look it up.
We'll get it sorted out.
Anyway-
Looks like that's hatched, hatched, isn't it? No, it's not.
No.
Yeah, it is hatched.
It's on this side here. You're not, you're talking about this part in here.
Yeah.
That's not-
But this is hatched, oh, so, oh, that's unserviceable.
Sewer not serviceable.
Not serviceable by gravity.
Right.
But I don't, well, okay, so, so, um, yeah, we gotta clarify that.
Yes.
Because that should be rural residential as well, because I think we do not wanna service that, even if it can be serviced by their pump station, lift station scheme.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna go back to this changes map. So, uh, let's see, okay, so this area, sort of this area here is, um, sorry, there's, there's not really many labels on here or anything, but this is, um, I might not see it. So, okay, so Lincoln Avenue, is that right? No, what's going on? Something's messed up with this. I don't think the, the, yeah, the streets are not lined up right, it seems, yeah. Yeah, one of these layers got out of whack, it looks like, because this stream, this stream should be shifted all the way over here. Okay, that's confusing, don't look at the streets. So, this area, trust me, this is, um, south of Lincoln Avenue, and 74 should be coming right through here. This area used to be all light industrial office, and I switched it over just to be commercial. There's-
So, with it, again, we, we gotta worry about this, because in a way, that's not a change.
Correct.
We're now saying light industrial and office are commercial.
Yeah.
Just a classification, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the red, the red is now just a bigger umbrella pulling in more, more things. Okay, let's see what else we got, um, what is that? Uh, country club, I don't, yeah, that was, I think that was institutional or something, but changed that over to green, green space. Also, the, uh, county fairgrounds, switched that over to green space. These areas, so this is the, you'll recognize this as the, the campus mixed-use zoning district now, so that's been switched over, um, because we, in the existing plan, we had a campus mixed-use. We brought that together just under the, the mixed-use, so that's all mixed-use core, and then some along, uh, west of Lincoln, and then just on the east side of Lincoln Avenue is, is that mixed-use core.
I, um, because of the way the zoning ordinance was amended, I think the CMU should be distinct from elsewhere. Because at 12 stories, it's completely different from any other. If you put the same category there on the plan as on South Lincoln, I know at least one person who might have a problem with that.
Right, yeah, but the plan, um, the place types, as we're calling them, um, don't, you know, it's not a direct correlation between a place type and a zono or a zoning.
A place type that has 12 stories buildings is not the same as a place type that has four-story buildings.
Well, if you, so downtown, you could build very tall buildings as well, so-
Right, so downtown and CMU-
Yeah.
I think are one place type. I don't think South Lincoln is the same.
Okay, so maybe, what about like the secondary mixed-use, whatever we're calling that?
We need to come up with a better label, as you said, but, um-
Yeah, no, that, that definitely makes sense.
High-activity corridor, high-activity whatever.
And would we, should we pull in Gregory Place stuff as well, and whatever the lower intensity is, or should?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I agree.
Because, because we, I, I think it's a corridor and node of higher activity.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're gonna, we gotta complete redo of the street, we've gotta com- increased redevelopment on the east side, we've got Gregory Place.
Yeah. Yep, okay, I'm on board with that. Let's see, what else here? I think there's just, there's just some random things, like, um-
It is hard to figure out what they are with the lines of the streets.
Oh, yeah, well, well, once we get rid of institutional, it's gonna be a little different. I think this is Lille, it was not labeled as institutional before, but I think now we'll probably just call that neighborhood, just, right? Because schools are, schools are allowed in neighborhoods.
Yeah, but on the annotated map, we'll annotate the schools, because that helps people orient where they are.
Yeah. Another big change, but not a big change, um, like where MTD is here along Lincoln Avenue, that was the light industrial office thing, um, just switching over to business as well. Ah, uh, and then this is all-
Dart.
Yeah, Dart, okay, yep, yeah, that's Dart. But we will need to figure out what we wanna switch the institutional Brookins area over to.
Activity node, I think it's, whatever, whatever that label you came up with.
Yeah.
Okay.
Industry Activity Center, or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, I like that.
Or node, which is a little more neutral, but whatever, yeah.
Node, node seems like smaller, though, doesn't it? Like, that's a pretty large- Like, that's a pretty large
But if it seems smaller to you, then that's fine.
Whatever. Okay.
And, and that would also be the Lincoln and Gregory Place would be the same thing, whatever we label it, would be the same.
Okay.
Kind of place.
Let's see if there's anything, ah, geez, I'm just gonna zoom out and see if I see anything. Sort of the undeveloped Menards types site, uh, let's see. Yeah, a lot of just this undeveloped residential, rather than having it painted as the, the lowest intensity residential. We figured having it at the mixed residential level would give more flexibility there. And, you know, if you're developing essentially new green, green, doing greenfield development, it makes more sense to do something that's more intense, because that's gonna pay, pay for the, pay better for the infrastructure that you've got to lay down, so. Yeah, Del Coman site, future Park District site, switch that over to green, and
We did talk to the Park District about that, and I think they felt like that wasn't something that they were gonna go forward with.
Yeah, not, not anytime soon, but, um, I mean, it's, it's there. It might, it might happen in 19 years, so.
Yeah, well, it may not be developed for a long time,
Yeah.
but I, I know who lives there, and they are my age or older, so it has been identified. It's gonna happen eventually. It may not be developed for a long time, but it's gonna be Park District property.
Yeah, does anybody see anything else on here that you're just dying to know why it's purple?
Did the water site change?
The water site did change. Um, we made that into, uh, sort of the, the lower intensity mixed use center thing. And then also, that's a good, good segue into the, going into the development opportunities map, I think.
Just, while I was thinking, um, do we need to do anything proactively regarding the, this grocery store site on the north, potentially?
I don't know that we need to do that at this point, but that's a good question.
Well, will it come to us as a rezoning at some point, and will we want to have the backing of the plan to make that change?
Yeah, I mean, well, this, you know, this, the future land use in the draft plan shows it as, as like the mixed use secondary, so I, I think that's good.
Yeah, I don't know where the site is.
You know, it's, it's institutional on here, although actually, the area, sure, part, part of it is actually, um, labeled for community business, so the
Yeah, it's in, it's in two parcels.
Yeah, hold on, did I, I don't think I, wait, I did, okay, cool. Okay, this is the existing so the site that they're looking at, well, if they were, if they're looking at the fire station site, which I'm pretty sure they are, so our fire station's here, but we also own this land here, and the Circle K is right here, so part of it is labeled this, uh, community business already, so it's already
The rest is institutional, which we've already determined means nothing, so
Right, right, so, yeah, so I, I think we'd, we'd be able, even with the current plan, I think we'd be able to make a, a case for that being a, a good use there.
Well, but in the new plan, we're gonna be identifying this as a
Mixed use, whatever.
Mixed use Activity Center.
Yeah.
So that's gonna be a fuzzy shape, which will include those sites.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not gonna be doing it parcel to parcel at this stage, but
Yeah, and we've got it called out here on this development opportunities map, so that's, I think that gives further backing. So, yeah, so this development opportunities map, I think, is pretty rad.
Pretty normal to me.
I, I mean, it does, it looks like, it looks like something that planners put together, so that's good. And I'll, I'll just, I'll take this time to state this again, I'm just, just so impressed with the work that the students have done on, you know, on, on all of this stuff. So it's really useful, and it's gonna make the plan so much better, so thank you all the students in the audience tonight. All right.
They're all watching.
Yeah, I was gonna say, they're all watching, of course.
Yeah, um, so this, yeah, this is a development opportunities map, so, um, you know, it's got, these red areas are sort of corridors that have good potential, so like Washington Street, um, Lincoln Avenue, sort of between, um, well, between the whole, the whole of Urbana, from 74 South, Cunningham Avenue as well, going from downtown all the way, well, the, the extent of Cunningham Avenue, let's say, because it stops right there. Okay, um, and then we've got sort of these orange blobs are, are sort of these areas that we think are, are good, um, what are we calling those? Nodes?
Yeah, but we're now calling them Activity Centers, right?
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
That's what we just
We should, be consistent.
Yeah.
So and, and the ones we've been talking about, the South Lincoln is not on here, so it should be on here. And we should, in my view, anyway, distinguish downtown Urbana and CMU from the others. Maybe by annotations rather than colors, but but I think in terms of ones we've talked about, those are the only ones that are missing on this map at the moment.
Now, I feel like that, that Lincoln Avenue is such a narrow stretch, and it's identified here as a corridor, so do we need to also call out with an orange blob? Because it would be
Maybe just capture Gregory Place as a orange
Okay, yeah.
But then the corridor, I think, covers the, the rest of it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree with that. I, I was, annotation may be sufficient if we add some other annotations to this.
Well, and to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I didn't, I didn't give the students the, the tasks that, to, to create this map, but I got the impression that the nodes were sort of, um, I guess, areas to be redeveloped, or like had more redevelopment potential versus, because I feel like Gregory Place is, is kind of, it's kind of there.
I think they're intended to be the activity nodes that we want to sustain. So downtown Urbana, I mean, from your point of view, it might be redevelopment, but
Yeah.
from my point of view, it already exists. Philo Road already exists, but we, it needs
Yeah.
support. The Gather Corner is hot.
Yeah.
So it, you know, it's not that it's not there.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I can, I mean, I'm, I don't have a huge problem throwing stuff around Gregory Place.
And, and it, it may not need a lot of emphasis, it could just be another annotation that identifies Gregory Place along that corridor.
Yeah.
Is there a reason that the Cunningham Activity Center has a solid line?
It doesn't on this map, on, on the updated version, so I think they must have noticed that between when I pulled it and printed it and the map that is on my screen, or on your screens now, so, yeah.
Okay, good.
But, yeah, I, I think this is really good, because it gives us, you know, it, it gives us sort of areas to kind of focus, because, you know, we have a, a finite, uh, finite time and finite staff, so, um, to have a, a discreet number of things is, is nice. And I think we'll, we'll want to call the, the Philo Road one, we'll probably maybe call that like Philo Road slash Windsor, because it's kind of
It, it does go down, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you might even come up with a different label for it, because Philo Road is not not exactly an aspirational level at this point.
Yeah. Yeah, is there another name for that area? Southeast Urbana.
Create one.
Yeah.
We had referred to it as an emerging, an emerging district, too.
Okay, well, we'll figure something out, we got some clever people.
And, and the shapes of these are, are intentional, that is, they're a bit rounded and fuzzy, but they're intended like the, the one currently labeled Philo Road, to acknowledge the pattern of development that is there, that, you know, we want to encourage.
Yeah.
And note it does not even include the lower part of the Pines parcel. And that's intentional.
And I like the use of the dashed lines, too, because that implies some sort of permeability.
Yeah, right.
Okay. And then, yeah, the one thing we pointed out earlier that's really useful on here, too, is just the, calling out the, the sewer areas, too. Because we do, you know, we do, we do get a lot of people that want to sort of expand to the south of Windsor Road, or, you know, we get inquiry inquiries from folks pretty frequently, and then we have to, you know, kind of explain that, yeah, if you want to spend millions of dollars to extend sewer, because they would have to come all the way down High Cross Road and then to the west to service part of that, so. Yeah, I really like this map, though.
Add, we need to add some things, so like, area unserviceable by gravity, it needs to be area unserviceable sewer, I don't know, the sewer's gotta be in there.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, this all makes sense to us, because we're looking at this every day, but for someone who
Right, yeah, it's like, don't step south of Windsor, or you might float away. Okay, um, I think that kind of concludes all the, pretty much all the slides of importance that I had. I did include, I did have some hidden slides, if we would, I, I think we've got a good, good direction, though, with, with how we're talking about future land use and also tying development into, into one. But Greensboro in North Carolina has like two maps where they do, um, I'll just show them to you since I have them here, but I, I like where we're going, actually. But so they have their future land use map, and then they have a separate map that shows future built form. But I, I think we can, we can have it all in one, and I like the language that we're using, too. If we're calling them, uh, what are we calling them? Place types, yeah, yeah.
But, but
So
we're still thinking of having these two, yes, or no?
I think so. But, but the future land use will be a, you know, will be a place types, right?
This will be called place types.
Yeah.
That'll be called place types, it'll be, yeah, it'll be annotated, um, and then this will be just sort of a companion, I'm not sure exactly how we'll use the development opportunities, but we'll use it, it'll be useful. So, I don't
Yeah, I mean, I, I think these are roughly equivalent to the two that you're showing from Greensboro, but I think for our purposes, they're better, partly because we're a much smaller
Yeah, yes.
We're dealing with a very different scale of stuff, so we can be more specific and, and
Well, and we talked about how all departments are gonna be using this plan, and particularly the development opportunities will be used by the economic development people, because it, this shows, yes, where we plan to have future growth or where we can develop, and so we can give that to folks to, it eliminates some of those areas that aren't feasible, you know.
Yeah, well, and it, it also is in some sense aspirational, that is, the corridors and
Absolutely.
We're, we're trying to do something, not just telling you where there's land available.
Absolutely.
We're not gonna use this one, though, right?
No, that's just, that was just for discussion purposes.
So I don't need to tell them to fix it?
No, no, they don't need to fix anything on that. Okay, well, that concludes sort of the future land use, uh, discussion, unless anybody has any final thoughts. Okay, and, um, we did share, uh, the updates that we made to the big ideas, big moves, little moves, and if anybody wants to talk about that now, we can do that, we can also wait, wait to give you more time to go through it.
We know, we know, we didn't give you much time, so you can always give us comments via email as well.
Got anything?
Yeah, I mean, I, I've gone through it, but it may be that I can sit down with
Yeah, if you want to meet with us, that might be more fruitful than
It might identify some, I don't know, more substantive things.
Yeah.
Let's see, where am I gonna start here? So, I, I, some of these things I'll just identify. I think we should figure out an example of what an area plan might do, or what it might be about. Because in the context of a lot of what we've been talking about tonight, it's not clear to me what's missing.
Like why we would need to do area plans after, yeah, if we
Why?
Yeah, if we have the plan with all this
If what we're actually talking about is somebody comes in with a proposal for part of the DART site, and we decide we need to think through in more detail how the whole site might develop if we have somebody wanting part of its site, that's one notion of what an area plan might be. But that's not a to-do list item, that's a sort of policy item, that it's back to incremental development and the stuff we're talking about in terms of place types. So it, it's not clear to me that we need area plants. I know we've done them in the past. But it's something to think about.
And just for context, um, that was, originally it said neighborhood plans, and we took that out, so
Which I agree with, as you may recall. And we agreed that calling the area plans was a better idea for various reasons, but I'm, I'm, that's why I'm coming back to it. So on big move four, I, I, I still disagree with the, the downtown as opposed to an area, and I think the map we were just discussing makes clear that we actually have a focus for the economic development people as well as other people, that includes things other than downtown. So the, we talked about it as an strengthened, and you could say an important node, or whatever.
Yeah, I thought we had that, that doesn't read as, as I remembered us talking about it, so, yeah.
And as another indicator, it's in two different sets of new words in two different places in your current drafts, so my guess is that something did slip.
Yeah.
But I, I, my, both of the new words still take the attitude that it's the, isn't now, but should be, and I'm gonna argue that it is one, not the only one.
And again, I think this is where we're getting into the aspirational, too, you know, is that what we want?
Right, and I would argue it's not. We want secondary nodes, industrial development, CMU, that's how we're gonna grow the city tax base. The downtown, yes, it's part of the deal for various reasons, and it's an important part of the deal, but not the only one.
And so, Lou, going back to that point, um, does changing the word the to an accomplish what you
Is, is almost enough.
Does it accomplish, okay.
I, I think in combination with the map we were just talking about, which you just described as being useful for economic development, because it identifies all these other places, then we're, you know, we're sending a different message then. then we're, you know, we're sending a different message then. I, I, the walking as top priority is an improvement. I still disagree, and it's, it's interesting that the first little move under it talks about walking and bicycles. And it, it's, I mean, if, if the notion is to rebalance among emphasis on modes of travel, and let's convey that message. And we haven't yet talked about the mobility, transportation, those maps, which students have been working on, and, and I referred to some of that in terms of Bill's point.
What if we use the last sentence, which is, "Getting around Urbana should feel safe and convenient no matter the mode of travel."
I suggested that in July, so it's a hard battle.
That seems like a not big move. Be, just in, in terms of like, we're trying to make it all, like, we, we, we might be able to massage that, but we're, we're being very deliberate in making these sort of like action statements. And that's more like a...
So, for, for, what I suggest is somehow word it more like rebalancing the emphasis in, in travel modes to emphasize walking.
Yeah, what, what...
I think that's what you want to do.
What about, so Greensboro has, they have big moves as well. It's amazing how they stole our idea from us before we had it. So they say, I think they, they say, I don't like how they phrase theirs, but I think there says "becoming car optional" or something like that. And I kind of like that idea where it's, you know, because you're not forcing people to give up their cars, but you can make it, you know, work towards making it an option. So if you're, I don't know, we could, we could think about that, and we, I could share their big idea for a future, you know, discussion as well.
Maybe flip what I was saying to de-emphasize car-only travel, or something like that. Because the other thing that we're going to have to do somewhere and somehow link the big moves to is deal with the transportation stuff. Where we are going to deal with bicycling, transit, and all the other stuff. So somehow, anyway, so I'm trying to go through these sort of quickly, so that, that's... We're sort of trying to get down into the weeds maybe too quickly. And, and the hire a transportation planner only appears under walking. And my, my hope is that if we're going to hire a transportation planner, that they are not only going to deal with walking. But that, that, I, we can talk about that when we're going through nitty-gritty of how stuff. Then under big move seven, this is where there's confusion of incremental infill and redevelopment. So, infill is putting something where there's nothing but within current development areas. Redevelopment is doing something where something has already been developed before. So those are actually two potentially different things. And incremental can be at any size chunk and may have nothing to do with infill in the narrow sense or redevelopment. So, we can talk about all three of them in that one place, but we need, there's some places where the, the words are the wrong words. Where we mean redevelopment when we say incremental, et cetera. Anyway, I can talk about that in detail with you later.
Okay.
And then there, in a couple of places in big move eight and nine, there's sort of ambiguity about some things that maybe should be put under the objectives. Or maybe should be in both places because there's a sort of a subtle distinction between what's an objective and what's something to do. But I've identified some, you know, some matches that we might play with. And related to that, I think that we should identify metrics with the objectives, not just with the to-do list. Because the to-do list, as you, as it now is reorganized, the metrics are basically, have we done it? But the objectives are what we're trying to accomplish, and you can, you can do something intended to accomplish something without accomplishing it. And you can measure whether you've accomplished your objective independent of whether you can do the to-do list. And I think some of the metrics are actually there, but I think they'll be stronger if they're associated with the objectives rather than the to-do list.
Okay.
And I think that will also help reduce some of the places where there's 20 metrics that, you know, the, the base rate observation from the people who study the use of metrics is if you have too many, you don't get any of them done. So I think we should narrow some of them down. And, and the only other thing that comes into this is the mobility, transportation stuff that I was talking about before. Otherwise, I think the pieces are sort of there.
Okay.
And this, this redraft gets close to being able to imagine how we link two additional sections after this on the land use and the mobility stuff.
I concur with Lou's last point, the, to link the metrics with the objectives rather than the little moves. But I, it, it implies that we're actually measuring important stuff. Are we, you know, if we're talking about financial footing, I would expect to see the financial picture now and the financial picture down the road. And walkability, how much walking actually occurs now and how much will occur later? If we're going to use metrics, then it's kind of an investment in, in actually doing it rather than, rather than a checkbox of a little move accomplishment.
And actually, that's an interesting point, because I don't remember financial metrics as being in there. Are they?
I don't know.
That, that's kind of scary. I mean, maybe I'm just missing them.
I don't know, maybe Carol, I don't know if you can chime in on the financial part of it. I mean, we don't have that in there, but I think that that's almost implied by the council and the budget.
There are metrics in number nine.
Yeah.
So, as I say, I may be forgetting.
I think we should... Somebody just turned my mic on, so, yeah, I think we should, I think we should, because that's an important part of what's driving this.
Yeah.
This isn't, this isn't just about the way our city feels to people, even though that's important. It's, it's sustainability from a financial perspective is huge.
And we, we make mention of, you know, within resources, you know, accomplishing whatever that task was within the, the resources we have, but we don't specifically talk about financial metrics.
I, I didn't see, in a quick rescan, and I don't remember any. I mean, one of the things we're trying to do is grow the tax base. But one of our metrics is not the tax base.
Nine, nine point four point three.
Yeah, I was going to say, we do, we do have that, yeah.
Okay.
Good thing you numbered them.
Yeah, it's a good thing, because as I say, I looked quickly at dining, I didn't see that one. But obviously I missed it, okay.
It even has a dollar sign on it.
Yeah, but that one's just from new businesses attracted, so it's, it's, it's kind of a narrow thing.
From new businesses attracted, yeah, but that's not actually the objective. The objective is the tax base. And growing the tax base without attracting new businesses may actually be important. And new businesses, much of our tax base is going to be increased with new rental housing, not business. So, but this gets back to the objectives needing metrics. And, I mean, I can't believe I missed this. The, the, we need to make sure there's an objective where that metric belongs. And that, that, that metric, and, and my guess is there's more than one. I don't, I don't know whether it's actually tax base. Yeah, I mean, I think it's tax base relative to something else, either as one measure or, or two measures, but... And, and what Dustin found makes exactly the point about metrics about the to-do list versus metrics about the objectives. Because we could have wonderful success on the to-do list attracting dollars from new businesses, and the tax base could still go down. So we need both, anyway.
Yeah.
Great.
I, I love you. Yeah, I've, I've looked at this, but not in super detail, so I'll come back with some more comments. But, I mean, one of the things when I was first going through this was thinking about how planning commission and staff would use this to, to demonstrate the rational basis for whatever action, you know, a rezoning or a special use permit or a PUD or something like that. And I think it's a much, it's much improved from the way it looked originally, but I'm still trying to think through that exercise. And so, you know, if we, since we have this, this, you know, this project that's potentially happening with this grocery store, right? So if, if, you know, there was a rezoning associated with that grocery store project, how would we use what is in here currently to demonstrate that rational basis? Would we...
Sorry, I'm laughing because there's a specific little move that's like, put a grocery store in northwest Urbana.
And then there's another one that addresses food deserts everywhere in the city.
Yeah.
So, and this is, Lou mentioned this, but in some cases, it's, are we just citing the objectives in the big ideas? Or, because sometimes there is things in the little moves that also seem to support, but that could also mean that they're not in the right place, that maybe they should be objectives underneath a little move or...
Do you have an example that you could, that would help us?
Yeah, I mean, not like, not, not associated with my, my grocery store example, but let's say that... Let's say that someone wanted to rezon a property to make a quadplex or something like that. So one of the ways to support that might be in big move number one. There's a line that says, with big move, little move 1.8, "Allow a variety of housing types in every neighborhood at scales appropriate to each neighborhood." So, to me, that's something that's more of an objective or a policy kind of statement, as opposed to, and it would support...
Yeah.
I mean, it would have been something that would have been useful to have in the case of the duplex text amendment, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, that's the first one I've got noted on my list.
As a policy.
This should be an objective. There, there's another reason it should be an objective, and that is we have to be careful that it doesn't actually contradict our place types. Because it says all, and we're not allowing all in all our place types. But it's clearly what, it needs to be stated in a way that's an objective so we can use it as Dustin is describing. But yeah, I mean, this, it's an example of one of the ones I've got in here on my list of details that...
One of the things I was going to suggest, if, if we, if there is the potential to reference things from both the big ideas and the big moves, is that we add a "B" to the objective, so "B 1.1, B 1.2, whatever", and then the little move is "BL 1.1, L, something like that." So if we get to the point where we need to reference something that's in a little move that seems to provide support for whatever it is that we're trying to do, then, then we can do something like that, and there's no confusion between those two. But I, that, I think there are other examples besides that one, but that's the one that has actually stuck out to me from day one, when I first looked at this.
I think if we go back and, and take what you've said about tying them to objectives, I think that'll help us sort through those maybe a little better. One of the things that Kevin talked about, which I thought was a practical use, when you talk about how planning commission's going to use it, or how a planner is going to use it, and, you know, we made the graphic that shows, you know, how everybody's going to use it. But from a practical standpoint, Kevin said, and he doesn't even know that that made an impression on me probably, but he said, you know, "I would probably print out this, this section right here and have that, and that's what I would use as reference." It's a quick, a quick guide that everything's in this, in this section. But we have to make sure that it, of course, accomplishes what, what we want. But I think that's, you know, this section is really what a planner or the planning commission would keep...
What section are you talking about?
This, this whole group here, you know, talking about the, the big moves, the big ideas, the objectives are all right here concisely, hopefully, when we get it finalized, that, that's something that, it's a quick reference guide, just that one section. I mean, you're going to use the whole plan, of course, with the maps, et cetera, but that's a kind of a, a quick, quick reference guide, I think.
But it's also the complete reference guide, because we don't have anything else at the moment, right?
Concise, and that's what our intention was from the beginning, is to have something concise that...
But it all, I guess what I'm saying is, if we need other criteria or there are things that we need for backing, there's not something else, some other section of this plan where they're going to be, they're going to be in these sections.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So...
So it's, it's not finished yet, but yes, the, the goal is that, yes, everything would be in this, this one section.
I have a... And then my other, oh, go ahead.
No, you go.
I mean, this has been mentioned already, but there are just too many metrics in some of these sections. And some of them are not clear, like what it is, why they're in a particular section and what they're measuring. And maybe just because more information wasn't copied from the table, but, for example, big move, big move number four, which is about strengthening downtown, there's a metric called 4.6.1, number of gaps in the network. I don't know what network that is.
Oh, yeah, sidewalk, sidewalk network, I think. 4.6.1.
I assumed it was related to sidewalks, but is it, is it sidewalks throughout the city, sidewalks in downtown, you know?
That's, that shouldn't even be there.
Yeah, that probably shouldn't be there, but...
That shouldn't be there at all. Because that goes back to the, to the walkability and sidewalks.
Or Chenchi just mentioned that it's, seems to be linked to little move 4.6, which is about connecting the city's pedestrian infrastructure with downtown, so...
Yeah.
It needs to be more explicit, yeah, absolutely.
Definitely.
Yeah. And I think what it came from is from the table, the original table format. We tried to abbreviate and not go into length, so you had the, you had the move right next to it, so it made sense. But in this format, it does not, and so you need to be, we need to have more, more verbiage.
And we're not going to have the table?
No, we'll, we'll have it.
It'll still be there.
Yeah, that'll be the more complete.
Okay, so that goes back to my comment before, there is going to be another place that's more complete.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so the table will still be there, but taking it just from that table doesn't fit when we do it in this format, so we need to expound on, on what it's really talking about.
And, you know, in addition, I think we've said this quite a few times, but in addition to making sure that we're measuring, you know, progress or, you know, how, whether or not we're making, having success to achieve the goals and the objectives, I think, I think there needs to be some thought put into the feasibility of the metrics being able to be updated and to be assessed on a regular basis. And, I mean, it would be better to have a smaller set of metrics that staff can do on a regular basis and that we can keep track of than it is to have... than it is to have a really, really exhaustive list that, you know, maybe gets done the first year and then just kind of falls off because there's not enough time to commit to it or something like that.
Yeah, I agree.
So I think we need to weigh those, those things.
You're correct. I mean, the, the value is in the implementation of, of the metrics and.
Well, it's also the communication. I mean, it's, I think we need to think through not just that we're going to have these measures and these metrics measuring, you know, implementation or movement, but what are we going to do with it, right? So who, how, who does this get shared with? How does this become part of the decision-making process of not just plan commission, but the rest of the city?
And I think by giving you a chunk, you don't see that other chunk that's at the end about tracking and evaluating. Not that I think it answers exactly what you're talking about, but that other section does explain how we're going to do it, how we're going to communicate, et cetera. But I think we can still expand upon it just based on what you're sharing now.
Yeah, I do remember that. But, yeah, just.
It needs to be expanded.
Keeping that in mind, in light of how many metrics, the ease of doing, you know, finding all this information on a regular basis. Yeah. Base, establishing baselines. I don't think there's always something about establishing baselines. I mean, what we're really interested in a lot of these things are change over time, not just, you know, a snapshot of something at a particular point in time. So.
And I think that was in reference to exactly what you're saying. We may not have said it as well as you just did, is that it's to establish a baseline now where we are so that you can show the progression.
Yeah.
Because it's all about that, like you said.
No, I, I will go check the reference book. There's a sort of standard reference on doing metrics for plans. My recollection is that the advice is on the order of 10, not on the order of 100. And we're on the order of 100.
Yeah.
And if you think about what would you really want to communicate? Like tax base? Maybe affordable housing, some, some measure of affordable housing? I mean, you can check off your to-do lists. That's fine.
Yeah.
You know, that, that's, that's a sort of a staff function and a, you know, a staff accountability function. But in terms of measuring the aspirations of what we're trying to accomplish, focusing on 10 and realizing what they are.
There's four, four big ideas, like a couple of metrics for each big idea. That seems doable to me.
I think Lou, you made a good distinction is the difference between a staff person being on top of it and doing their job that's going to accomplish goals versus using metrics for the, for the, for the plan. I, I think that's a good distinction.
Our job here is to put together the best, help you put together the best comprehensive plan that you can. So I apologize for jumping ahead. But what's going to be the impact of this comprehensive plan on the zoning ordinance? Do we expect piecemeal changes? I mean, we expect to have zoning ordinance. We expect to have zones, I suppose.
Yeah. No, that's, yeah, that's a great question. So, you know, we've, we've written into the plan that, you know, the, the long-term thing is to rewrite the zoning ordinance. Like that's, that's the, the big, the big target that's out there. But then we also put in there that we'll be making incremental changes between now and then. Because that, you know, that might take a few years to rewrite the ordinance to match up with, with the plan. And we know, I mean, there's, we have a, a list. I think last time I checked, we had over 70, like, anything from like small, really small, just like nitpicky changes to, to more substantial stuff that we would like to see changed. And that's just really to even align with our current plan. But we'll be, yeah, we'll be proposing sort of incremental, maybe like low-hanging fruit type of things between, you know, now and when we would rewrite the ordinance.
There are also grants for zoning reform. I was on a webinar.
Are there now?
Yes. And I think it's, I think HUD for one puts out grants. And they ask for you to demonstrate that you have started to make your own progress, which like the CMU rezoning would be a perfect example of, you know, having, having done something like that, you know, internal by staff. So, yeah, I, I can't remember. This is like a, a CM credit thing I took. I don't remember where it was. But if I can find it, I'll let you know.
Yeah, that'd be great.
But I know it was, HUD was one of the providers of these grants.
We can search for it as well, but yeah, that's.
Let's go back and look at my CM credits and see where it came from. Anything else?
Well, this was extremely helpful.
Yeah, this has been great.
Great discussion.
Next steps?
Uh, next steps, I mean, we'll, we'll go back, make some changes to, to this section again, based on your comments here. We'll continue working with you and the students to sort of refine things. I think I had some other notes written down for sort of next.
I think one of the things that we had wanted to see or get some sense of was kind of like an outline of, I mean, we know, you know, we know what this section looks like. This is the second time we've looked at it. But how do some of these other things start to fit into the map? I mean, start, the maps, how do these other maps?
Yeah.
A lot of these are maps. How do they start to fit into the plan and what other content is needed to sort of frame this information? I think that's something that we're curious about too, because it seems like these are really.
Can you say the last part again? The second part? You, you mentioned how the plans fit in and then.
Yeah. Well, I, I imagine there's content that we need to create that frames how these fit into the plan and describes how they're used and how, how they relate to some of these other things. I mean, you know, I think the, the big, big ideas and big moves are sort of shot through all of these different maps and graphics that have been made. But I think there needs to be some, some explicit text that sort of makes those linkages between these two things. So it doesn't just seem like we have, you know, the big ideas, big moves, and then, oh, and here's a bunch of graphics.
Right.
Have fun, right?
Well, in the, in that section, I know that we did have an introduction that, but we need to elaborate just on what we've heard tonight.
Okay, we'll give that some thought.
And now it's not called future land use, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Place types.
Place types. That's, that's much better because I, yeah, I had an issue, like future land use just seems very narrow of a term, I think.
Yeah. Anything else?
And feel free, if you've had time to just digest things, you know, shoot us, shoot us your thoughts via email. We'd be glad to. Some things come to mind after you had discussion like this. So we would appreciate it.
So do we expect another study session on mobility stuff? Do we?
Yeah.
What's the?
Yeah. So I, I just, I just got the layers today. I loaded them up. I started looking at them. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through. So essentially, sorry to give, to give everybody more background here. So one of the student groups is looking at basically our entire network of connectivity. So this, the layer I got today was all street, street layers. So we're using a guide from the, well, NACTO, I can't, it's National Association of City Transportation Officials. They make really good guides for like street, street design and bike, bikeways and things like that. So they're using the NACTO Urban Street Design Guide, something like that, to, basically to classify every street in Urbana based on, I mean, most of it's going to be based on sort of how they function now. But there's also some ability, since we're looking to the future, to, to tweak some of the classifications, I think. So a good one that I noticed today was like Illinois Street down here. Right now, it's, you know, it's a four-lane street. We're going to be redoing it in the next couple of years. But I think just the basic thing that it's classified as is something that's maybe a little more high-speed type street than we'd really like to see it be. So we, I'll probably be suggesting we change the classification of that to be something lower speed and more, you know, more neighborhood scaled as opposed to being a, you know, a four-lane boulevard like it is right now. So I'm going to go through that layer and then sort of make, make some tweaks. And then once we have that, we'll be able to discuss it. And since we have a lot of streets in the town, you know, I'll, I'll curate what we want to talk about when, when we pull that map up. So that will, will be forthcoming.
Maybe.
Hopefully soon. Yeah, maybe two weeks. Maybe. There's a holiday in here too, so.
I understand. It's real.
And I get to go back to committee right after the holiday, so, for the, the duplex text amendment thing. So prepping for that too.
Yeah, okay.
And the students are off next week, yeah?
Yeah, but that'll, while the students are off, if I can find some time, I'll, I'll get, get my changes made so I can share them with them. And then we can roll, roll with that.
Sounds good. Anything else? All right. With that, we are adjourned at 9:24.